School District Board of Education. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. You see right above me, we have a little flag. If you wish to stand, that's great. If you want to keep at your seat, that might be okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one God. With liberty, justice for all. Item 7.1 Adoption Modification to Agenda. We have a, this is an opportunity for board members to make modifications to the agenda, to pull things off the consented agenda or modifications through the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Please vote using your electronic school board system. Motion carried, seven zero. Next item, seven two. Approve Executive Session Meeting Minutes for March 11th, 2020. Chair, we entertain.
I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the executive session meeting minutes for March 11th, 2020. No further questions or comments, please vote. Motion carried, five in favor, two abstain. Item seven three, approve regular session meeting minutes for March 11th, 2020.
I made the motion, we approve the meeting minutes as posted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for March 11th, 2020. No further questions or comments, please vote. Motion carried, six in favor, one abstain. Item seven four, approve district response to COVID-19 workshop minutes, meeting workshop minutes for April 9th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Sometimes I think we want to have game show buzzers here, so. It has been approved, it has been moved and seconded to approve the district's response to COVID-19 workshop minutes for April 9th, 2020. Please vote. Motion carried, seven zero. Next, we have consent agenda items. We have four items on the consent agenda. Eight point one is approve bills for payment. Eight point two is April supplemental pay. Eight three is the food management contract extension. And eight four is approval of contractual agreement for Panorama. Chair would entertain, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moving kind of slowly here, sorry. So that last, that last one, we mentioned that was the services to help train the teachers on behavioral and counseling needs. Is that right, Andrea?
It is actually a program, a software program that all the Clay County schools are utilizing for our social emotional learning and our curriculum that we have. And so all staff will be trained on that to assist our students that are at risk.
Okay, I know that was huge. One of the things when I talk to teachers, they want more help.
Right.
When it comes to the at-risk kids. So I really like this and I really like that the, what's the fund called that's paying for that?
The Clay County Children's Service Fund.
Right, right.
Yes.
Let's see. Do we have, did we, I'm sorry, I've lost it. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
So moved. To approve the consent agenda items. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda items. Please vote. Motion carried, seven zero. Next item, Communications nine one, Board Priorities Update. Dr. Schutz.
Sorry, I had myself muted. You have the updates there in your agenda and you can see it's time to begin thinking about next year's priorities. One consideration might be to replace the 10-year master building plan development with the execution of phase one of the master building plan. I can take any direction you want in terms of wordsmithing or any suggestions that you might have for your upcoming board priorities.
I'm thinking a board priority might just getting back to a new type of normal, whatever that might be.
And you have in your agenda there, if I'm not mistaken, a list of your current board priorities. New normal, okay?
What would you think, Dr. Schutz, to, instead of just replacing, adding the language of executing phase one of the 10-year master plan while still reviewing the remaining phases of the, of the master building plan as an ongoing project?
I like that, Denny, because it should be a fluid document, one that changes with time as new information comes along. I like that. I can work on that. Any you would like to delete?
No, I do think there are a few there that we will need to continue with. We can't get rid of them by any means.
I have a suggestion. We are going to be experiencing a, a change in our administration in the central office. Perhaps do we need to have some type of board priority to monitor, to evaluate how that changes? How that transitioned, how the phase in, phase out is happening in the central office of staff responsibilities?
That's a good idea. Yeah, lots of changes. I can work on something there.
Any other suggestions or comments?
Okay, I work with.
Okay, so. I realize, Board, that this is a new, this is a new aspect for us working virtually like this. So. I guess I'm pausing more than I normally would at a board meeting to make certain that people have an ability to, to get their two cents in. And I understand as we've worked this so far, we've found that sometimes unmuting mics and remuting mics takes a bit. So things seem to be slowing down here. Again, it's always been my intention that we always get maximum input from board members. So if you wish to speak, again, because there is latency in this system, be aggressive, unmute a mic, raise your hand, whatever. Because I want to make certain that everybody gets an ability to speak to an issue and that we don't move too fast. Let's move on now to nine point two, Assistant Superintendent for Support Services.
I've got just a couple of items I want to share with the board this evening and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. First is regarding benefits. Open enrollment starts with staff. We had already planned to do this prior to the COVID closing, but our staff is starting open enrollment April 27th through May 8th. It will be conducted via telephone conferencing with a outside benefit consultant from Benny Block, which is an organization that we partnered with. We started the process today actually providing some online informational webinars to allow staff to learn more about the benefits that are available that will all go into effect on July 1st. Effective June 30th, the Hickman Mills School District is exiting from the self-insurance pool of greater Kansas City, which will disleave Blue Springs, Green Valley and Smithville as members. While the goal is to expand the membership of the SIP JKC, we will experience a reduction in stop-loss premium for next year. So it will financially be to our advantage for Hickman to, to exit the pool. Currently, as we've been talking along this fiscal year, Smithville is not having a good experience. Self insurance, we currently are experiencing 153% loss ratio, which is for the fiscal year ending June 30th. However, we do anticipate as a result of the COVID-19 closures, the way the hospitals and doctors' offices and so on, so forth are running, that a lot of services are not being provided unless essential and therefore our potential costs are going to be reduced, which we believe may allow us to get to the end of the school year without a special assessment being needed to prop up our, our participation in, in the pool. It was a very prudent decision that the board made last month, increasing the board paid cap approximately 11.87% to maintain the 100% fully funded benefit for, for staff. So on behalf of staff, I thank the board, applaud the board for, for taking this action when they did. It was, is a very good move. Secondly. It was, we continue to work on the FY 20 budget and the FY 21 budget at the same time. If you do not have on your calendar a financial workshop that will be held on Monday, May 4th at 7:00 PM. Format to be determined based on the current, current environment. We are in a strange time when it comes to school finance. I've included some documents in your board packet and for the public to review that provides some insight from other school business officials and folks across the state and consultants on kind of where we are financially and where we potentially may be financially across the state of Missouri. It's going to be a rough time. There, there's no question about it. But at the end of the day, we still have kids that need an education and we will do everything that we can to make sure that they receive that education. From my perspective, what we do know is that there's going to be some hard times. What we don't know for sure yet is the amount and the way federal dollars potentially will be in place to support the COVID outage. We have learned today that possibly funding will be coming from the federal government through the state of Missouri based on the federal Title I program. It's anticipated or projected that we will receive about 82% of the funding that we typically receive for Title I, which in our case is a five-figure number. It, it's not, it's not a big number. So we, we are still trying to figure out the financial impact of, of the COVID outage. We anticipate next year a drop in state funding. We think that the current fiscal year will be a minimal drop, possibly as little as two to 3%. We also anticipate based on the recession in 2008 that we could experience as much as a 5% to 6% drop in revenue for FY 21. The school district receives about 38% of its funding from the state of Missouri and it's all based on seat time. Well. This year, it doesn't take too much calculating to figure that we're not going to have as much seat time. And we're not sure yet how the state of Missouri is going to handle that as far as not only for Smithville, but all the other 530 school districts across the state of Missouri. Also, we get funding on the state level from Prop C, which is sales tax. It's anticipated that statewide sales tax are going to be down. Sales are going to be down. It's also, we get funding from what's called the classroom trust fund. The classroom trust fund is basically revenue from gaming. Since the casinos are all shut down, obviously we're going to lose some, some revenue in that source also. So based on the webinar that we attended today with school business officials across the state of Missouri, there's still a lot of unknown information. And we hope in the coming days to have a better handle on how funds will be infused back in to help out school districts and to help entities across the state. We're also a little bit leery of next year with the potential impact on local revenue for, for the school district. Most, all our local revenue is based on real and personal property. We anticipate as back in 2008 that there's going to be some folks that are going to struggle. And as a result, it may affect our ability to collect local taxes and/or there may be some properties that unoccupied and/or goes to market. And as a result, some, some value changes in those properties. So regardless, we are, again, continue to work on FY 20 and 21 budget. We will have a FY 20 final budget and a preliminary budget to present to the board on June 17th. But we will have a better handle hopefully for everybody at the May 4th workshop. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Kruger?
Mr. Kruger, just have a question about the, the stop-loss that you mentioned and about our premium going down. Is that paid? Is that all together or is each individual district have their own stop-loss?
The individual premiums for the claims are each individual district. However, the stop-loss is bought as an aggregate because of the number of participants. We get a volume discount. So we, so that truly is a pooled number. And because of some unfortunate circumstances that Hickman Mills has experienced over the last few years, our stop-losses run up as a result of their participation. So all of us will experience some savings as a result of them coming out. So that is pooled, stop-loss is pooled.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Then let's move on to Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services.
Thank you, Russell. I'd like to start with an update on the food support for our families and students. We're currently serving about 500 students on a daily basis, either through deliveries or through the drive-through pickup at Horizon Elementary. Today, we had an additional 72 who came through for chicken patties. It's been very popular and we'll continue to do that as long as we can. In addition to the meals provided on a daily basis, we're also providing food boxes for over 80 families. And so I have some groups and individuals that I would like to recognize for their contributions because this really is an operation with many moving parts and without the people there who are helping us, we wouldn't be able to do this. So I'd like to begin with thanking Chris Donnelly and FeedNorthlandKids.org for providing the food donations and financial support for the weekly food boxes. I'd like to thank Price Chopper for the generous pricing for the food, weekly food box items. And the community of Smithville for their generous donations of money through FeedNorthlandKids.org or food items that they are bringing to us to supplement our food bank. All of that would not happen without Wayne. Wayne Kruger for coordinating the large donations and purchases for the family food boxes. On the day-to-day operations side, Jennifer Kramer, Kim Nitschi, our open managers, and Desan Kraus for preparing the meals for our students and getting them ready for delivery and pickups. Colter Bus, especially Kelly Derringer and the drivers who are delivering meals each day, along with the following employees and board members who are also delivering meals daily or weekly. Len Mathias, Ashley Jones, Denise Harwood, Kim Davis, Jennifer Stanley, and Dave Cradifil. The food boxes, the donations are being sorted by some of our counselors on a weekly basis. Jennifer Robinson, Callie Downey, Christina Huff, and Rhonda Boyd. And then those sorted donations are being packed into boxes by a small team. And that is Tony Slack, Lisa Manns, Susan Argott Singer, Andre Ambrose, and Kristy Gilli. It's kind of amazing to me as I look at that list, all the different groups that are a part of this process. But we are successfully taking care of quite a few kids and quite a few families and we are very proud of that. My next topic is our summer program. We are hoping for and planning for a July Warriors Explorer Program. The dates will be July 6th through 31st. We will have a new registration form to share with families by the end of the month, as some of their intentions may have changed since we originally launched our registration for the intended June summer school. If we are able to have face-to-face summer school, we will dedicate a portion of that school day to catching up on content that we have missed due to our extended absence, especially in our elementary grades. Online summer classes for high school students will begin on June 1st and end on July 31st. This summer, we will offer personal finance, health, and ACT prep. And a registration form has been shared with all students in grades nine through 11. That registration will close on April the 26th. Lastly, for the past three and a half weeks, we've been implementing our continuation of learning plan. Kudos to our teachers, administrators, students, and our parents for their flexibility and perseverance throughout this. Most of our students are working online, but those who need it do have paper lessons either mailed or delivered to them. So we are doing everything we can to meet the academic needs of our kids right now. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Michelle, what is the, do we know how many kids are actively participating on a daily basis or saying somewhat engaged?
We did some, a survey from our principals early in the process and for the most part, we were in the 90% participation range. And that was, I think, the second week of the program. And so that's something that we'll need to continue to monitor as we go along because this isn't easy. We would never, ever, we wouldn't let a student who wanted to take their entire class schedule online. We would let them try one first and see how they do. And so to put all 2,600 of our kids in an online environment is not ideal. And we know that as we go on through this, that their participation will wane. So our teachers and our principals are monitoring that and we will reach out and provide support and encouragement to students as, as we need to. But we will continue to look at that participation rate, Sarah.
The summer school planning that you're doing, are you, you're anticipating it'll be a normal face-to-face? Or are we also preparing contingency plans for online again? Or would you say we can't do online in summertime?
Well, that would take quite a bit of preparation. So we are hoping for a face-to-face opportunity. And that's why we've postponed it to July. Our feeling is that most of our families will have had enough of virtual learning by then. And so our participation probably would be very low if it was virtual, which is why we've, we've pushed to July. And we are hoping and praying that we will be able to see them, have them come to us.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Cradifil? Well, hearing none, thank you, Dr. Cradifil. Nine point four in the agenda, comments from the audience. We did provide an opportunity for members of the public who wanted to comment via this virtual meeting and to come to the office. There is a camera computer setup that people could use. We've had no one avail themselves of that resource. And we also neither do, did we have any comments submitted in writing? Is that correct, Dr. Schutz?
We did not have any comments submitted in writing.
Okay. Then let's see, let us move on, the agenda. The next agenda item is 10.1 Professional Development. But this has been postponed, postponed to May. Next item on the agenda then is 11.1 General Financial Review.
Yeah, Wayne gave you quite a financial update. Wayne, do you have anything to add from the perspective of the financial review?
Not this time unless the board has additional questions. We, again, we are working on the current budget. With the exception of a few items, a majority of our revenue has already come into our coffers at this point.
Then let's move on to. No further questions or comments on 11-1 General Financial Review. Then let's move on to 11.2. Resolution calling an election on whether the district should issue $14 million, $100,000 in general application bonds for the purpose of constructing, improving, renovating, furnishing, and equipping school facilities.
Okay. I am going to speak to both of these at this time, if I may. Wayne and I recommend that the board move forward with the August ballot questions for the reasons I've outlined in your agenda for 11.2. Basically, there are no tax increases associated with either question. Our students need additional safe ADA accessible spaces. Construction is an economic stimulator and will get more bang for our buck in an economic downturn. I envision an informational campaign as these are not tax rate issue, increase issues. I envision an informational campaign as these are not tax rate issue, increase issues. Now more than ever, due to the pandemic, we should rely on an informational campaign. We would utilize mailings, social media. Robert and I would visit virtually with civic groups that are available, depending on what the orders are between the kickoff of the campaign and August. I know some groups, Rotary, for example, is trying to get established in a virtual format. I assume others are meeting that way as well. We would utilize some video presentations that we would publish on social media as well. So in informational campaign, in informational campaigns, you're not asking for a yes vote. To ask for a yes vote would mean you could not utilize school district funds. You would have to raise the dollars and establish a PAC to distribute those dollars for those kinds of efforts. Instead, the school district would engage in an effort of trying to educate the public on what it is we're trying to accomplish and simply ask them to vote, but not to vote yes. We would prefer the board adopt the ballot language tonight so we may move forward with planning the campaign. But you could wait until your May meeting, which would still give us time to submit the questions to the election officials and get it on the ballot. So there still would be time. I don't want you to feel rushed. Later in your agenda, I'm going to request the end of the school year be adjusted to May 21st. Your May board meeting until May 20th. You do, however, have your workshop on May 4th. I don't know if you want to utilize that for other reasons as well. But I certainly would like to get a jump on the campaign before school gets out. Even though we're pretty well-connected now, I think after May 21st, a lot of devices that we're on, a lot of times, are probably going to be off a lot of times. So I don't want to miss that window of opportunity to connect virtually with families. Wayne, do you have anything else to add to that before we entertain the board's questions?
No. Again, I failed to put it in here just so the board understands. Question one, which would be the general obligation question, does require a four-sevenths passage. Question two, which is item 11.3, is a simple majority passage.
And it's question two, 11.3, as we've talked in the past, that will require the greatest amount of education. If people are plugged in at all, they're familiar when a school district, particularly our school district, runs a no-tax rate increase issue. Done that many, many times over the years. Growing school districts lean on that frequently. All school districts lean on that when they can. So we've done pretty well there in the past with little effort. The second question is not a typical question that your average patron has seen before from a school district. So we'll have to ramp up our education piece there and try to break it down, you know, to terms that are understandable for people.
Dr. Schutz, you've said this is something that our patrons have not seen before, but it is not an uncommon technique used by other districts. It seems to me that other districts in the area have used it recently.
Yes, Blue Springs utilized this approach a couple of years ago, and they were successful. My guess is Wayne could probably rattle off a few more school districts. So no, good point. It's certainly not as common as a no-tax rate increase bond issue, but it is something that is utilized.
But I think it's also, as you indicated, the potential heavy lift to educate the patrons. As we've seen in the past, that they may not fully appreciate the fact that monies that are raised via the debt service levy cannot be used in operations. And we've had situations in the recent past where we've had to be very tight in our operations while at the same time we continue to go forward in capital construction. And people have seen that and wondered, why don't we spend, move money from one to the other? And we can't do that. Only the patrons can do that, and this is what we're asking in this resolution, for them to move a 10 cents of that from debt service to operations.
Yeah, and I think that we'll have to try to find a way to weave that into the programming. You know, you can't fit all the information on a page that you want to, but if you can hit the highlights with a click, click here for more information on this or that, it certainly would be in there somewhere. I've already heard that from some staff members. Why are we building, why are we building, you know, new buildings when we're struggling to get our reserves up to where we want them? And we're wanting to raise teacher salaries. So what are we doing? Going to build something right now? So yeah, that will have to be included. I did fail to mention, as it relates to the informational campaign, I did reach out to a political consulting group to ask for their availability to assist us with digital media, type media that we could utilize in mailings. And we could also transfer those images to social media. So kind of the behind-the-scenes, heavy lifting, the detailed kinds of work along with utilizing their expertise and how we might, you know, phrase things and communicate things in an effective manner. Very, very cheap to get that kind of assistance. I was really pleased with the numbers that came back in. Cheaper than what we have done in the past for, mind you. And that was some time ago. We paid more for it then when we did it ourselves. So their printing is cheaper, which leaves you then more room to pay for the postage. So we've just begun a conversation with them, you know, when the board will want to pull the trigger on this and when it would be acceptable to kick off a campaign. Other questions?
What are the benefits of postponing this until May? I can't remember. I know we talked about it, but I can't remember what they were.
Well, one of the benefits is that it gives our patrons a month to understand that we are going ahead with this. And if they feel very strong that this is not a good strategy to respond back to us, it gives them a month to respond before we pull the trigger.
That's right. Okay. So maybe, I mean, we could vote on it, but then not actually submit to the state for a few weeks. That'll give them time to respond?
I think...
Is that a possibility?
I think we vote on the language. I mean, Dr. Schutz will correct me on this. I think we vote on the language, but we don't vote on submittal. And we could wait to devote, wait to vote on submittal in May. Go ahead, Dr. Schutz.
Yeah, I see no reason why that couldn't work. Knowing that you've got your workshop on May 4th, though, I wonder if the board would be comfortable in giving the public a couple of weeks to respond. And then you could consider at your May 4th workshop whether to pull the trigger. And you still could stall again if you wanted to and wait till May 20th. But I wonder if it wouldn't be worth bringing the topic back up. I could, Sarah and Russell, as we discussed yesterday, I could begin to roll a little bit of bits and pieces of information out in my updates to families. Although the updates I'm doing right now are all about the coronavirus. So I'm not sure if that would be the appropriate format or not. But I could do what I've done like at chamber meetings and just provided a couple of soundbites on what we're looking at doing. And hopefully that, something like that, would bring people to the surface if they were concerned. We could be very strategic and purposeful in how the board highlights go out from this board meeting. We can be sure that it's illustrated clearly in there exactly what the board is considering here. We could put it out on social media, you know, again, in soundbites to try to get some conversation going. So maybe you could get a sense of, you know, where the public stands on moving forward. Ashley?
I would also like to note that in the Warrior Wire, the community magazine that's going to be going out here in just a week or so, this is a highlight within that magazine.
Yeah, that's right. I forgot that. So the Warrior Wire, the magazine publication that goes out, is that three times a year? Or four times, four times a year it goes out. This issue will talk about the board's master building plan, and it will go into, you know, some detail as to what's in that plan. It doesn't say that you're going to the polls in August. It does say that I would think that you're talking about that and that here are some things that, you know, that that would include. So I think there's plenty of opportunities to get it out there in the sense that people can talk about it without you actually pulling the trigger and without us actually kicking off a campaign.
Dr. Schutz?
Yeah.
I was going to say, how about all the above? And then on your, your updates on the COVID, just basically break it into a separate section of it because I think you've had a fairly, a fairly good following on your, on your video presentations on what's going on in the district. Just kind of have it as a part A and a part B on communications from the district on what's going on now and what's upcoming in the future. And utilize the audience that we have and any opportunity you can.
Yeah, that's a good point, Denny. I mean, this is one reason why we should consider going in August is because of how too thin our parents are right now and how appreciative of our teachers and our administrators and our board members. And so having these attention in a good way and everybody's... I mean, even the people that are upset, they're grateful and they recognize how hard everybody's working. You know, they just need a little extra help, which is probably what the mentality is of every parent that comes to us that is upset. They're grateful, too. They're just not showing it, and they just need a little extra help.
Dr. Schutz, would you clarify when you say people are upset? What are they upset about?
Oh, I get contacted, and I'll talk about this actually in a little bit about modifying the calendar. But I get contacted a couple, three times a week from parents that are just at their wit's end. They, they, they have, they're working from home, their spouse is working from home. They got two little ones that are doing their schoolwork at home, and they just can't keep up with it all. And they're frustrated, and they're just reaching out, you know, please help me. Can we pare this down a little bit? Can my kid do this instead of that? Can we just do this project? I want to take them outside into the woods and do, you know? So that kind of thing. They're upset, they're frustrated, not necessarily at us. But just need some help, you know?
I guess part of my point was, was that, you know, patrons are reaching out. They feel like they've got the district's ear right now and communication is going both ways. And that, you know, maybe a lot of questions could be answered.
Yeah.
And to say, get the ball rolling and get a positive, positive momentum in the communication effort would go that way.
Okay. Well, with your approval of the language, that gives us enough to push those conversations along. And we would make it known that you've not, you've not approved the ballot language to be submitted to the election officials, but you've approved the language. And should you push that to the next step, here is what we would be doing. Here are the things that you can expect and kind of start working on some pieces that will help communicate that. And then you can see what kind of feedback we get.
Yes, it's not as though this is completely new. I've been to the chamber a number of times where this has started to become an ongoing theme where Dr. Schutz has reported to the chamber members that this is coming down the pike, that we have a master, we've updated the master building plan, and we'll be coming to them, to the patrons, to ask for general obligation bonds and no-tax rate increase bonds in order to complete Eagle Heights and to do other construction activities in the district. So this is not new to the patrons, to the committed leaders. But I just feel it's, in times like this, we don't need to make the entire decision all at once. Just take it one step at a time, as long as we're not constraining our ability to move forward. So having said that, any other questions or comments on 11.1? Actually, as Dr. Schutz discussed, we discussed 11.2, which is a resolution for the general obligation bonds. And 11.3, which is a resolution calling for moving 10 cents of our assessed valuation from the capital funds to the operating funds. We will consider 11.2 first. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the language for a resolution or approve the language for the resolution for the general obligation bonds as incorporated in item 11.2 in our agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution calling for an election on whether the district should issue $14,100,000 in general obligation bonds for the purpose of constructing, improving, renovating, furnishing, and equipping school facilities. In this motion, we are approving the language, but not yet submitting the language to the election. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carried, 7-0. Item 11.3, which is the resolution calling an election on whether the district should increase its operating tax rate, should increase its operating tax levy ceiling by 10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation to provide funds for the purpose of paying general operating expenses for the district. Again, this is an educational question, educational issue. It is raising the operation levy, but we would have an offsetting decrease in our capital levy. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the language proposed in Agenda Item 11.3. Did you get that done? I think we had competing motions.
I do have a question, actually. In 11.3, will it show up as kind of like a little synopsis that you've given us where it says what it really means, increase, all that stuff? Will that be provided on the ballot or will it be just purely the question that we're approving?
Yes, it will be, yes, it will be provided. If you click on the attachment that was included in the packet, the actual bolded language there is what would be included on the ballot. Statutorily, that first paragraph is the paragraph that allows that transfer. The second paragraph, and we would hope that the voters would not have voter fatigue and would actually go through the process of reading that, that will be included also.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of, I was curious because I was wondering, I'm just spitballing about everyone else's opinion, but if the last sentence says the district adjusted property tax levy to remain unchanged, I don't know if that should go first or last because like I said, it's at the end. And I feel like once I get to the beginning of that second paragraph, you know, it shows that there's an increase, and I feel like that might just automatically scare them and not read the rest. But I mean, it's just what popped in my head, but I know we're gonna educate and everything. Just curious.
I could certainly run that by the bond counsel and see what their opinion is.
Yeah, okay.
I I have a question as well on the language there. Um, in in the second paragraph, a question too, it talks about the increase from uh, $3.94 points or 94.65 cents to $4 or 4.0465. But it doesn't talk about what the debt service is going to when you take that 10 cents away. Is there a reason why they don't put that in there? To to show that it is going lower?
Yeah, I can, again, I can ask the bond counsel. This is just similar language that they've used in the past. Uh, to to answer your question, uh, it's going to go from approximately $1.15 down to $1.5. But I can ask it, you know, if that's added uh, without making it too complicated to to further explain that.
Well, these are all willing questions. The issue though is that do we uh, do we spend uh, voting on this until we get the answers? Or would you approve the language this evening with the possibility that we may want to change the language before we finally pull the trigger and send it off to the uh, off the state? If Mr. Krueger comes back with the changed language that is much more appealing to us or what that we think may think would be more appealing to the patrons or more understandable to the patrons.
I can have this ready for you for your May 4th workshop.
I think it'd be good just to have our due diligence on it.
Yeah, I'd feel better about that being May 4th.
Well, then uh, since I have the board is that uh, well, I'll ask and if the board wishes not to do anything, then they won't. Is there a motion to approve 11.3? Hearing none, uh, let's move on then to uh, new business. 12.1, continuation of compensation during COVID-19 school closure.
Yeah, so we level our pay for all of our employees really, but our hourly employees as well. We calculate um, the hours that they're going to be expected to work over the course uh, of the fiscal year. Uh, we divide that over 12 months and they get 12 uh, equal payments. Um, most districts around us do that. There are some that don't. Um, you know, and for understandable reasons. But um, we do it as a means to try to um, give them consistency in their paycheck. And then to um, uh, use it as a recruiting tool and a retention tool with our employees as well. Adjustments do need to be made from time to time. Um, whether it be overtime paid or someone needs to flex their time to get all of their, all of their time in. So I tell you that because even districts that don't level pay are continuing to pay their employees as if they were working under normal circumstances. So I think it's important with the board knowing that the district is paying everybody as if we were all working uh, our normal jobs. I think it's important that the board has the opportunity to consider this and to uh, to act on whether we continue this or whether you have different direction. Most of our jobs, we were able to shift from fulfilling our responsibilities in person. Uh, we shift from that to fulfilling them virtually. Um, and 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 many of us are working uh, much harder and much longer hours uh, than we were before because it's just so different and foreign to us. Uh, because we get into a rhythm, things get a little bit more manageable. Um, but but many of us have certainly put in uh, additional hours. But nurses, instructional aides, behavior interventionists, uh, those kinds of positions. It's kind of hard for those jobs to transfer uh, very easily to a virtual environment. So building principals have pulled everybody together to pitch in where they can. We have an instructional aide that Michelle mentioned before, an administrative assistant uh, that Michelle mentioned. They're they're Michelle's right hand in going through the meal delivery service. Um, they they may or may not be putting in all of their hours with that, with that effort. Uh, and they may be putting more than than their normal hours. So they're working pretty hard. So people are filling in um, where they can, when they can. Uh, behavior interventionists, for example, still have the same caseload as before the pandemic. And so they're still checking on those students, checking in on them. Uh, does that take as much time as if they were actually in school? I don't know. I don't know how much time it's taking them to check in on on their students. So the difference now is we don't physically supervise the work of these employee groups. Um, and we don't have to sit, we don't have systems in place that reconcile the amount worked uh, for their compensation. So developing systems would be advisable if the course were extended, the closure were extended beyond this school year, if this was just gonna be uh, going on for a long time. But right now, we just ask for your approval to continue to pay these staff members and to plug them in where we can. And uh, so so that is our employee side. There's another side to all of that. And that's our contracted services side. And I'll let Wayne comment to that effect.
We also have some contracted services for students with IEPs, for example, that have outside placement. Those individual centers are um, not seeing those kids in face-to-face contact, but they're still continuing to reach out to those children to check on them i- in a different role, whether it be to uh, to see how they're doing, to try to deliver their educational uh, plan, um, still provide some counseling, some speech therapy, uh, even providing uh, physical therapy workouts, uh, so on and so forth. So that's a contracted service that again, is not meeting face-to-face, but it's it's still working with our kids that we feel that we need to continue to compensate. In addition, uh, Culture Bus, our transportation contractor, uh, as previously previously mentioned, they are providing meal uh, distribution and meal delivery services now. But uh, they're only using, for example, seven of the 16 regular routes uh, to do that. So they're not running the whole fleet. However, they are having two staff members on every bus um, do that. Uh, one, it's my opinion that it's the right thing to do for the purpose of uh, retention. Uh, prior to last week, we didn't know when we were coming back, so we didn't want to not compensate them and then have them go out and go on unemployment and or go to other places of employment. And then we needed them back at a day's notice and they weren't available. So we wanted to continue to compensate those folks. Uh, secondly, the culture contract is uh, is based on a uh, number of days in a typical school year. Uh, now that the state law has changed to to hours, uh, that kind of is a little uh, complicated. But we take their contracted amount, we divide it over uh, nine pay periods. And that's how we've been compensating them. So the recommendation from the administration is to continue to provide uh, wage payments for all those regular employees, contracted employees and and non-contracted salary and non-salaried positions through the remainder of the school year as if it was business as usual.
Uh, Wayne, I have a question on the culture. Did I see something from uh, Desi that mileage for delivering meals would be considered a reimbursable in transportation?
Yes, that just come out. Uh, that was not the original position and USDA did not have that original position. So we're working and learning more about that. Uh, we are tracking mileage. Uh, so should that be an allowable uh, claim, we will submit that.
I have a question. Um, does does public bodies have any? Uh, do they have the ability to apply for some of the relief through the CARES Act?
Based on the webinar that uh, we attended today with the school business officials, uh, because we are uh, right now, the answer is no.
So just so I understand, we have a few positions that we have laid off. I guess not necessarily laid off, but they're not working for us right now, such as substitute teachers. Are we seeing a lot of savings in that area?
Yes, we are seeing some some savings in the area of substitute teachers. Uh, we've also, uh, you know, there's other areas that we're seeing some kind of personnel savings too. Such as uh, you know, we haven't paid uh, officials for spring sports. Uh, we haven't uh, our contract with OPA Food Management is all based on a per meal basis. So we're not paying uh, the folks at OPA uh, the same as if we were in school. Uh, we're not paying for uh, transportation services, for example, for homelessness or going to these uh, outside placement centers. Uh, so there's some savings there. We're we're not buying as much fuel. Uh, there's some savings there. So so yes, there are, we are seeing some savings.
Other questions or comments? Well, my comment would be that uh, we intend to honor the contracts. And we would expect that that they, the employees, vendors would be on their honor to contribute as much and where they can in this situation. So, uh, Dr. Schutz, uh, this is a uh, info action. So are you asking for a motion by the board to approve the continuation of your current practice of of uh, of paying the vendors and employees the way we are currently handling it?
Yes, I am.
Let's see, do we, do we have any specific language here as a I see recommendation to authorize administration the continuation of wage payments for all regular employees, contractual and non-contractual, salaried and non-salaried, whose duties may be modified as a result of the emergency COVID-19 closing for the purpose of maintaining morale, reducing turnover and ensuring continuity of staffing when the school resumes to full operations. Recommendations through the remainder of fiscal year 20. That would be the motion.
I make a motion to approve the continuation of the compensation as provided in uh, item 11, 12.1.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the continuation of the compensation as indicated in the recommendation in agenda item 12.1. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Wade has a slow connection.
Yeah, I still have not gotten anything. It says I'm synced up. I'll try and rejoin the meeting again. There we go.
There we go. Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, 12-2, proposed Eagle Heights architectural contract timeline and fee structure for design and construction documents.
Mr. Krueger.
We've included this in your packet this evening to uh, put us in a position to have the project complete at Eagle Heights for the sixth classroom addition. Um, typically in previous construction projects, the uh, board has not authorized the professional consultants uh, permission to move forward until those issues have actually passed uh, by the voters. In this situation, we're asking for you to go ahead and authorize ACI Boland to to do some of the work prior to the issue actually going to the voters to simply place us in a position to have those classrooms available in the fall of '21 at Eagle Heights. In the documents that you've uh, included in your packet are three documents. One is is the AI contract, the second is the timeline. And the third document is an estimate from ACI Boland based on the projected cost from J. Dunn. It indicates that the total design uh, package uh, for roughly $3 million of work will be approximately $183,000. To eliminate the risk of the board, uh, we've asked them to to put the proposal together in such a way that we could do it in two phases. The first phase would be uh, approximately a $50,000 phase, which would be the work that would need to be done prior to the election. And prior to the election to position us in the timeframe to still be completed by the fall of '21. So in the event that the election is not held and or not successful, you would only be obligated for that $50,000 uh, amount. The the remaining roughly $130,000 amount would not occur until the second phase of the contract actually kicked in. Regardless of when this project is is uh, completed, and it's not a question of if it's needed, it's just when is it completed? The the items that are included in that first phase uh, are required regardless and would not, would never go bad. For example, the survey, the survey is the survey and and the survey is not gonna change, uh, just like the geotechnical report's not gonna change. Just like the civil engineering for the for the drainage and and uh, underground work is not going to change. And then the structural engineering is put in there because for procurement purposes, one of the items that will stretch a project out will be that structural steel. And we want to get that work package uh, done in advance so we can get that out as quickly as possible against and not delay the project. And then the architectural obviously is is the consultant for the uh, not just the drawing, but then the mechanical and electrical and and everything that's needed to complete this project. So again, this is not what you've typically done, uh, but we're asking that it be done this time to not delay the project and have those classrooms available for the fall of '21, assuming that the issue passes in August of 20.
Okay, back to what we talked about earlier. Since we are going to, we approved the wording, but we're not gonna submit it for a few weeks. Is this something we need to hold off on for a few weeks? In case we do not actually submit the wording to the election board?
That would be my recommendation, that this would be uh, hand in glove with the approval and notice to proceed to submit the language to the election authorities.
So then possibly we could just address submitting or approving this proposal uh, at our workshop on May 4th, like the language we discussed earlier.
Uh, yes, I perhaps so. A point of clarification, I think it's evident, but I just, to ask to make sure that it's clear. The total for the ACI uh, proposal is 183. The total for the ACI proposal is 183 and the real bid is 50. The 50 is incorporated in the 183. Danny makes a good point. We could just simply table it to our May 4th workshop. Does anyone object if we do that?
I think it sounded like an ideal.
Okay. We have a new dimension. Actually, we have head shakings, but, but I guess as I think back when we had a, a meeting in person, we would key on our head shaking up and down or no, and so we took visual cues. So this is why this virtual video meeting is very good because we get these visual cues, which when we're taught in speech class that 90% of our communication with people faced comes from non-verbal cues. So why, we will table this, we will table 12-2 until the May 4th workshop. Next item is 12-3, waiver or graduation requirements for the class of 2020. I suspect this is a Dr. Cradefield issue.
It is a Dr. Cradefield issue. The state has already waived some requirements for our students, such as the personal finance requirement, CPR training, the Missouri and US Constitution test, just to give grace to those kids who perhaps were not able to complete that and for one reason or another cannot complete it before the end of the year so that they can go ahead with graduation and move ahead with their lives. I would ask the board to consider two other concessions. Our policy states that a student needs 26 credits in order to graduate. That is two greater than the state minimum requirement of 24. So one thing that I'm asking you to consider is to allow a student who has only 24 credits to go ahead and meet our graduation requirements and be able to receive their diploma. Secondly, the state recommends and we require four English Language Arts credits for graduation. There is a provision in, in law that allows us to adjust that as long as we are adjusting it and applying it evenly and consistently for all students. So I would request for this year only that we reduce the ELA requirement to 3.5 rather than 4.0, which will again allow some of our students who may be struggling in the online environment, allow them to, to graduate on time since this is no fault of their own.
Dr. Cradefield, when does the administration make the cutoff determination of those who would graduate? You know, if I remember years past, there might be students working up until the morning. As, as Chris Haslam had told me, there's students working up the morning of that graduation, hoping to get things done so that they could walk, they could graduate. So is there, since we're being fluid about potential new graduation date, but we're asking to change the end date of school? Do we have a date in mind then when we make the determination of kids will be done? Or are we still being flexible, fluid on that?
I believe that the last day for seniors, and Wayne or Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, it will be May the 9th. 8th, Todd says, May 8th, and so that would be the deadline. Our administrators and counselors have been checking on our students' progress and I received a message this morning that stated that currently there are only two or three seniors who are not meeting the graduation requirements that I am recommending to the board tonight. So we have a couple of kids that we'll need to work with in order to make sure that they graduate, but the vast majority will be able to walk across that stage virtually or in reality with these concessions.
Dr. Cradefield, you kind of answered part of the question I was going to ask. Without these concessions, how many students are we talking about that are impacted?
If I remember correctly, 20 to 25.
Any further questions or comments? If not, the chair would consider a motion to approve the updated graduation requirements as incorporated in a memo to the board dated April 9th, 2020.
So moved.
It has been moved that the board approve the updated graduation requirements as indicated in a memo to the board from Michelle Cradefield dated April 9th, 2020. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carried seven zero.
Thank you.
Next agenda, item 12-4, Personnel Recommendations.
Yes, you have the recommendations and we ask that you approve those recommendations.
Any questions or comments that the board has upon these recommendations?
I make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as provided in our packet.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the personnel recommendations as provided in a board packet. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carried seven zero. Item 12.5, 2019, 2020 School Calendar Adjustment.
Yeah, I'll give you a little additional information here on this item. The pandemic has created a lot of stress in our lives as we've been forced to adjust how we live and how we work. We know it's challenging for schools and we know it's challenging for teachers in particular, but don't forget about our parents. If our parents wanted to, wanted to homeschool their kids, they would have already chosen that route. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I've received a handful of emails from parents that are at their wits' end and requesting a softer approach with their kids' education at home because they're so frustrated. I've got a 16-year-old in my house and he's pretty self-sufficient. He actually likes this distance learning thing. He works at either my table or Laura's table. And then he tells us when, when he's done and we check to see that he's done and he has a good part of his day left, you know, than to and of himself. But parents trying to work from home with two or three little ones is quite a different story. I received an email from a parent yesterday from a mom. She's a nurse. She's working 12-hour shifts. Her husband is a truck driver. He delivers medical oxygen. He's working 16 to 18 hours a day. And on top of all of those duties, they're trying to homeschool two elementary-age daughters. So they're just, you know, really, really struggling with how to meet all of these new needs in their life. So I know adjusting our calendar from the 29th, actually it had been the 28th because we weren't going Fridays, the 28th to 21st, it's only six days. But I think it's the right thing to do in light of not only what our teachers are being asked to do, but what our parents are being asked to do. This also wraps up school before Memorial Day, which is tidy. We're not isolated in this thinking. Our neighbors are having these same conversations with their school boards. Again, certainly we want to do what's best for Smithville. We will apply for a waiver from DESI to achieve the 1,044-hour requirement. This won't impact our ability to still get, you know, that waiver granted. The commissioner has indicated that all waivers will be granted. All school districts, to my knowledge, will be submitting a waiver because no one's had the opportunity to achieve 1,044 hours. Our, our distance learning opportunities do not count this school year. There are provisions for next fiscal year, but not this year. So they don't count. So everybody's going to need a waiver. So I recommend the board adjust this year's school calendar to reflect May 21st as the last day of school in the term. We would however like to keep our, our staff, our instructional staff and our support staff associated with instruction. We'd like to keep them that last week of May. There's a lot of work that we could be doing and those are days that they were contracted to be working anyway. So caveat there, kids will be done the 21st, but we're going to keep the rest of the staff. I'll answer any questions you have.
Was this on, was there anything by DESI as far as the recommendation or is there something that we're expecting to come out? Or what's the approach?
Yeah, good question, Denny. We were, there was some discussion that DESI may come out and just across the board, this is when school ends in the state of Missouri. That conversation has since stopped. We're not, we're not going to sit around and rely on that anymore since it seems to have stopped. So we feel like we need to jump out and do what we think's best for Smithville.
When are we looking at having the kids turn in all the equipment and their library books and cleaning out their lockers and stuff like that?
Yeah, that was, was in the update to parents yesterday, we talked about that. We're not worrying about that right now. We're still under strict orders. In May, as we start to get towards the end of the school year, we can look to instituting a procedure across the board that will allow for kids picking their stuff up as well as kids giving stuff back to the schools. They need to return back to the schools. There's what, close to 500 devices that have been loaned out there, let alone the seventh through 12th graders whose leases are expiring and we need to collect their Chromebooks as well. So there's a lot that needs to take place. Everybody's going to need their device through the 21st of May if the board approves this adjustment. And, but we're not so concerned about that right now, but we are making plans for how that will need to take place down the road. The orders may lift a little bit by then, which could adjust how we could go about doing this. So like, like a lot of things, as you deal with this pandemic, you know, I find myself saying several times a day, time will tell. And we have to have, you know, Plan A, B, C, and D depending on what develops in the coming weeks.
Any other questions or comments? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the, adjusting the 2019, 2020 calendar to include May 21 as the last organized day of school.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjust the 2019, 2020 calendar to include May 21st as the last organized day of school. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote. Hey, very fast Wade. Motion approved seven zero. 13-1 miscellaneous.
Yes, a few items here. Item number one, I think most of you are probably aware that the group that's named Audit Smith, Audit the Smithville School District, I believe that's the official name of their group, they have posted on Facebook a receipt, if you will, from the state auditor's office that signatures have been received. Wayne has been in communicated, in communication with the auditor's office and confirmed that signatures have been received and they are in the process of verifying those signatures. We all know that this can take some time. We all know that with, if they're successful with having the appropriate number of signatures of registered voters, then we would, by statute, the, the office would have to audit our school district at our expense. Now, this late in the process, the question is, is it too late to request our own audit at this point in time? And, you know, I think you could guess what, what that answer might be. But, but Wayne did a little probing today. He's been, he's been the liaison, the primary contact to the state auditor's office. Wayne, what'd you find out?
They, like us, are working from home and are slow to respond, is what I found out. Right now, I did not get a response back from the state auditor's office. What I did find, and I did make the request on behalf of the school district, that the signatures and the petition, once submitted, even before verification, is sunshineable. And I've made the request to get a copy of those signatures just so we can kind of see what they're looking at as we start this process with them. She told us on the, on via email that they did not have a timeline and they would send us an official letter once those signatures had been verified.
Okay.
So we really don't know yet whether the door is closed for us to request an audit or not.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's, it's worthy of asking per our discussion yesterday. You know, when you're talking about a potentially an $80,000 spend for that audit, as they say, it never hurts to ask. We'll find out.
Well, you mentioned the $80,000 audit. That would have been painful during a regular year, but you know, we could be going into a recession right now and it's going to be even more painful going into this recession. And I know when they were collecting signatures, they were not giving 100% accurate information. So I would like to see the list of people and find out what their concerns were with the district and why they signed the audit.
The list of concerns will not be part of that. It'll just be signatures. But again, we have requested those signatures.
I felt it appropriate to plug it in here to your agenda to give the board the opportunity to, you know, kind of kick around that event and that it has taken place and to let you know where we're at in trying to get a few questions answered. Anything else on that?
I would suggest, are you saying, Mr. Kruger, that they haven't fully responded back to you because they, as you say, they're working from home. They're slow like we are sometimes? So might I suggest we, we table this since we seem to be building up an agenda for the April 4th or May 4th workshop? Perhaps we transfer this also to the May 4th workshop to see if we have any updated information?
Yeah, we can add it in the document for that.
Okay.
Okay. Second item, as you know, the April 7th election postponed to June 2nd. I don't know, I'm, I don't have any information on what they'll do if they don't do it June 2nd. If they have no excuse voting, I don't know. I don't know what they'll be able to accomplish. So June 2nd is where we're at. So. accomplish. So June 2nd is where we're at. So Greg, Russell, and Denny are still serving the previous term. Greg wouldn't be sitting here right now if the election would have happened on April 7th because he was, he was done. But that's good for us, Greg. It's good to have you around.
Does he get overtime?
He does. Yeah, he does get, and we, we pay triple. We pay triple. Yep, triple time. So there is that. And then Wayne's already mentioned the May 4th, the May, May 4th workshop. So we'll do that in a similar fashion to what we're doing right now. It will be livestreamed. I did get confirmation from Robert that we are only livestreaming to those accounts within our organization. So that wasn't the intention, obviously. So this is recorded. So I would like to post this recorded board meeting in, in a medium that people from outside the organization can access. And then we'll figure out for next time how to get that broadcast beyond our organization. And then Russell will also gets requests and best practice recommendations on, in light of our current circumstance in our society, recording the meeting and posting it later. Again, I remember the, the live meeting being the big concern. So I'll see what, I'll see what I can find out. And that's all I have.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the issue with the live meeting is that if someone stood up at public comment and made libelous or slanderous statements that we wouldn't be able to shut it off in time, that, that, I'm just speculating, that could be an issue.
Yeah.
So, since we have the FCC seven-second delay. Anything else? Let's see, the next thing would be item 14.1, a motion to adjourn. The chair would entertain them, let's see, there we go. The chair would entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It has moved and seconded that we adjourn. Please vote.
Do we have a link to go back into executive session?
Motion carried, wait, wait, motion carried 7-0, we are adjourned. Yes, I don't know. Do we have a link? I haven't seen one yet.
I'm providing that right now. I'm, I'm creating a calendar event and I will invite you to it to begin at 8:45, but you can plug in late if you have to run to the restroom or something.
Yeah, let's, let's figure out maybe 8, 8 to 50. Yeah.
50. I'll set it for 8:50.
All right. See you, see you in the next, see you in the next dimension.
On the underside.